Mr. Newark is out. Uh, Mr. Selden is missing. Mr. Hippolyte is running the camera. A man of many talents. Going out of order, I'm going to go to a piece of council business, FY 1617-38, and take it up immediately. And should the council wish to move forward, the following motion will be in order. Move to refer the transfer of a 233-plus-or-minus-square-foot parcel of land from the town to the owner of 200 Phoenix Crossing to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a recommendation pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
I think we have to add it to the agenda.
Have I moved it?
Move to the agenda.
Second. You want to take it up right now?
Okay, we can take it up right now. And how are those in favor of adding it to the agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye. I move that we do it.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Is there discussion?
It's only a few hundred.
I know it's only a few.
233.
Okay, or calling for vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, that is passed and out of the way. Okay, then, next item is a presentation by the MDC regarding frequency of residential water customer billing from quarterly to monthly. Whoosh, excuse me, we're gonna have to pause on that one. There is a public hearing at 7:35, which we passed at this point, to solicit public input for the purposes of amending Article 7, Section 2-92 of the Town Ordinances to eliminate the requirement that two members of the Conservation and Energy and Environment Committee also serve on the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. I could say this hearing is now opened. Mr. Berman?
Robert Berman, I'm a Republican. I thought this was on the agenda. I have a couple of questions, and I hope something you can answer regarding this. It's been a longstanding practice in town to make sure that the community is well-served. I remember the Open Space Conservation and Energy Subcommittee served on this committee because they're one of the few bodies in town who tried very much to oversee an awful lot of things involving using our revenue. I'd like to understand what the rationale is for eliminating your being on that committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berman.
May I answer that?
We'll have to take it up with the discussion.
David Mann, one Adams Road, perhaps I can answer Mr. Berman's question. I've been on the Wetlands Commission now almost 20 years. And years back, the CEC was established, I think it's probably at least 12 years now. And its original function from being a conservation and open space body was transformed by the council to make certain that this group would also look into energy, renewable energy, and environmental issues. Not that these are terribly dissimilar from the wetlands, but they are sufficiently different so that they don't necessarily gain the interest of people who want to run for the or be on the Wetlands Commission to sit on the CEC. So for the last five years or so, we've had a member from the Wetlands Commission on the CEC who never showed up and didn't participate because it wasn't of his interest. So the purpose of the change in the ordinance was to make available opportunities for anybody to participate with the CEC, even if they come from the Open Space Committee or whatever, they can still participate. But that the CEC and its effort to accomplish a lot of objectives for the town needs the efforts of everybody that's been assigned to it. So based on that, the CEC submitted this ordinance to change, to change the definition to require, not to require, two members from the standing Wetlands Commission. And I support that.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. And also, thank you for the information you supplied me this past week. I appreciate it.
Hi, I just wanted to talk with my very rich drive, and I just want to echo what Mr. Mandis said, but I was just, because we had the hearing tonight, I was just gonna make a quick statement. As a member of the Conservation, Energy, and Environment Committee, I simply wanted to report my and the committee's support for the rule change removing the requirement that two members of the Inland Wetlands Commission serve on the CEC. However, one thing that's important to note, in Chair Marie McDonald's letter on this issue, which I think was included in the council packet, the CE is happy to have voluntarily voluntary participation from other town parties, town bodies, particularly inland wetlands, TPZ, the Economic and Environmental Commission. So we are happy to have someone from the Wetlands Commission. We just don't, you know, the requirement doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
May I raise a point of order, Madam Mayor? I'm gonna have to note for the public hearing, this is one reason why I'm listening to the two speakers, Mr. Mann and Mr. Berman. I'm confused, because this is very clear. So the purpose of amending Article 7, Section 2-92 of the Town Ordinance is to eliminate the requirement that two members of the Conservation, Energy, and Environment Committee also serve on the Inland Wetlands, the Watercourses Commission. They both said, members of the Inland Wetlands Commission serving on the CEC, which is the reverse of what this says. That's one of the reasons why I'm even more confused than before.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
I'm Marie McDonald, I chair of the CEC. The request for this change in ordinance is because persons who are members of the Wetlands Commission can't serve on the CEC and need not be required to serve on the CEC and vice versa. When we have the requirement, we have people who are approved, I would say, by the committees who never showed up because they had absolutely no interest. And there's no overlap. The same issues are not discussed on both conditions. If someone who is on the wetlands is on the CEC right now, but there is no reason why they have to.
Thank you. Having no further comments about the, on the public hearing, I will now go to announcements and presentations. Presentation by the MDC regarding frequency of residential water customer billing from quarterly to monthly.
Close the public hearing?
Yes, the public hearing is closed.
Good evening. My name is Robert Cuspo, I'm the Director of Finance at the MDC. As part of my job as Director of Finance, I oversee customer service and billing. And we wanted to meet with the number of towns, and our number of towns about a change in customer service process. Just to give you a background, back in June of 2015, the MDC used to do a web survey to allow customers to pay their bill through their CEC to where the bank accounts. In July 2015, we switched over to use a vendor called Kuber. And using the website, the Kuber, customers can now pay through credit cards, they can do one-time payments, recurring payments. We saw the ability to also take payments through your checking account as well. And that was rolled out except in July of '15. In August of '16, the MDC revised their bill to be more transparent as far as all the different rates and so on and how they're on the bill. The prior bill was basically a one-pager that was summarized at a higher level. So that new bill was rolled out in 2016. During this past year, with the drought that we had, many of our customers had very high water bills. We had some customers that applied since September with the drought, the water you want, did the whole set of other things, where people were getting bills anywhere from $300 to $1,000 for a quarterly bill, which is significant. And over the last year or so, we've had many requests to switch over to monthly billing. And a monthly billing, what that will allow our customers to do, you won't have to wait 90 days to get a bill to see what you're giving your bill every month, just like you do with your cable and your phone. So in June, if you see they use $300 worth of water, the water you want, you may cut that back to July or August rather than waiting to get your bill in September. The other thing is, we're looking to roll out budget billing. So for those people that want to pay, just like you can do with your electricity bill, you can pay once a month, average amount, and then in the course of the year, we'll reconcile. So again, so if you want to pay a little bit more during the fall or the winter, if you have to stay high usage, that will allow you to spread that over the course of the year. The other thing that is part of this customer service change, we're also redoing our cycles. So the cycle is, is basically, in the old days, when the guys used to walk around, they actually read your meter on your house, they would have to walk up and down the street. Right now, the MDC has about 65 cycles. So there's a cycle, like Hartford has about 12 cycles. So there's certain areas of the town where you have to walk and actually read meters. Today, we do electronic, so you can actually drive up and down the street, and then the truck has a meter, and it can read three to four streets or more, most sides. So you don't have to walk up and down the routes like you walk in the street. And so part of this is to redesign that whole meter reading routing of the street like this. So we're gonna go from about 65 cycles down to about 32 cycles. So we're cutting our cycles in half, and that will allow us to bill all of our 100,000 customers within a monthly period. And so what we're currently doing is we're rolling this out by town by town. So South Windsor, East Hartford went to monthly billing in February, Brothers Field went this month, and then in April, we will have town of West Hartford, Farmington, Bloomfield, Windsor, and East Green Bay go to monthly billing. So what will occur is you'll be getting a quarterly bill, say, the first of March, and then what will happen is, we're gonna send a letter to all our customers saying "Bloomfield," right after you get your first, your quarterly bill. So it'll be a separate mailing, so you'll, most people will say, "Why didn't they just cut a bill from the MDC while they get a letter?" In that letter, it's gonna say, "Your monthly bill will come in the next two weeks." So basically, go get your quarterly bill, and then within three to four weeks, they'll get that next monthly bill. At that point after, they'll continue to get a monthly bill going forward. The monthly bills, again, will be more manageable for most customers. You're not gonna get, you know, three to four dollar bill in a quarter, that'll be roughly about $100 a month, which is comparable to most people's sort of phone bills, cable bills, and so on. So that's the plan, and we just want to advise the town, we will be knowing by all our customers, like I said in the letter, there's information on our website. If you have any questions, please feel free to call. And I said, we just wanted to give the council a heads-up, in case you made any calls directly from the customers about what's going on. We've had a very successful rollout. Many people have agreed with this, because again, you refuse to get monthly bills. We had a couple of people that were concerned about the rates. So if you have a $40, $44 charge for a quarterly rate, that's gonna be divided by three, so you're not gonna get $44 a month, it's gonna be $14 a month. So all the rates that work quarterly will be split into monthly increments. If I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have?
Mr. Washington?
You just said, excuse me, you indicated that the rates will be cheaper.
No, the rates will be split.
They're gonna be split.
Yeah, the budgets are already set for 2017, so, for example, the $44.94 is the quarterly customer service charge. Instead of being $44.94 for every quarter, it's gonna end up being about $14 per month. It'll still add up to $44.94 per quarter. So all the rates and everything have already been set by the board back in December of 2016.
So won't be any change?
There won't be any change.
It won't go up?
It won't go up this year.
Okay. And will you have any collection agencies involved in it? Will that price be cost passed on to us if you have a collection agency, or will you have a collection?
Currently, we have collection agencies that we use for our multifamily homes. For our single-family homes, we handle that internally. So currently, that's already built into the budget for collections for the multifamily businesses.
Okay, so that's built in. I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Merritt?
Did you say that you have certain banks that people can go to to pay their bill?
Sure, I mean, you can go to your home bank right now, and just like you do at Rise when I pay through my bank, at Rise, they send the money right to Rise right out of my own bank account. So if you go and contact your customer.
No, but somebody could go in with cash to some place and pay your bill?
The only place we can currently get cash to go through the point is right now is our local road facility where our customer service building is. With Kuber, we're actually working with them, we just haven't been asked. We came up with a new concept where they have relationships with, like, say, CVS, Walmart, and other companies.
Oh, they do?
So we're looking at that, where people can actually go to the CVS and pay their water bill. They were collecting on our behalf, the Senate, so that's coming up in the near future as well as.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Schulman?
Your, the MDC has a huge budget increase for next year, absolutely enormous. And I don't think it takes into account, tell me if I'm wrong, this new proposed way of billing. And if it does not, could you give us some idea of what the increase costs to you with respect to this, this method of billing, number one? And number two, I assume if there are collection costs and so forth, you're gonna have to give a piece of the money collected to the collection agency, and there'll be more business for the collection agency, thereby reducing the amount of money that you actually get. So how have you accounted for this, or are we gonna see another increase next year?
And what are you talking about specifically about the huge increase? Are you talking about the overall?
Yeah, the huge increase is in your overall budget.
Well, the water rate went up, I believe about 4 percent or so over the last year, so.
When the water rate goes up, that means your revenue increases.
That's correct.
I'm talking about the expenditure side.
The expenditures are in budget and at revenue. So whatever is budgeted for revenue is always a great expense for the expenditure. The vast majority of our expenditures on the water side are related to rates and below. So fortunately, this year has been very conducive, not conducive to rates, because it's a test of 30 miles, so the budget for water, for water, it's typically handling all the water rate rates. So when we do a budget, again, revenues are back to expenses, and we do try to manage our expenses. So by financial side, you look at the MDC, last year, we eliminated 33 commissions, so we do try to manage our budget to keep costs down. Part of this implementation is to try to reduce the account, not only in customer service, but also in our billing department, as we streamline our processes with monthly billing, implementing, we're re-implementing our SAP system. The goal is to downsize all the loss.
You're fine.
For this, the other step, actually, with monthly billing, we're gonna roll out to e-billing or online billing to eliminate the use of paper. So with the same next check, right now, there are about 16,000 people signed up, who are gonna pay their bills online after receiving a monthly bill, so, online. So that will be the next step, so we don't have to pay for it. So we do expect costs over time, once we implement it, come down, here, production, as well as here, where the postage and the mailing.
And I assume this provision made for people who, for one reason or another, can't or won't pay on that.
Excuse me?
I assume there's provision for people who either can't or won't pay on that.
Correct. If you can't pay online, you can still come and look at the CEP, or a couple service builders pay. And I said, if we go to the rollout, this is a feature where you can go to CVS, Walmart, then you don't have to drive to Hartford, you can pay the route here.
What I'm talking about is, they gotta get a bill in order to pay. If the bills are given online, how do people who don't go online because they don't want to or they can't?
We will still have hard copy.
Still have hard copy.
That don't sign.
Have you estimated the expense? You're gonna have a postage expense, et cetera, for sending all, all these bills every month? You're gonna have a bill within your agency for creating the bill for the individual person as opposed to something like an alcohol loan type, what we have now?
Well, again, we do eliminate the alcohol tax. That will just be part of the regular bill that we're setting out now. That'll just be another line item. So if we were to go, we're trying to pursue using charge, that bill, that's how we're gonna pay the, the alcohol taxes, that will just be on the bill.
Excuse me, but that's not what I'm referring to. There's a cost to doing what you would like to do, the individual billing. There's a cost to that, to the MDC. Has the MDC figured out what that cost would be?
We have, we budget for, we do billing every year, so that's already incorporated into our budget. The opposing, they're all, they're staffed, so we may have some issues. So all those costs are billable for, for like now.
Mr. DeLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to ask a question about the quarterly bill and then the monthly bill. So the bill for October, November, December, that's already been sent out, right? So the bill for January, February, March is issued in the month of March?
So if you were to, a customer that, say, would take, for example, we have a customer on the 7th, you would get that bill the first week of January.
Okay.
And then you would get your first monthly bill the first week of February.
Right. So you would be paying a quarterly bill and the first monthly bill at the same time?
Your quarterly bill would be due the first week of February, and your first monthly bill would be due the first week of March. It's pretty definitely, so.
Right.
It'd be pretty, they would double between.
Right, so you're actually, you could be incurring a bigger expense for that first month if you're.
Well, there's, if you got some separation between, so if you had a $300 quarterly bill, and you didn't get a $100 monthly bill, you can pay that $300 January, February 1st, and you can pay that $100 on March 1st. It's not gonna be until 30 days until after you get that first monthly bill.
Right, but so for that first quarter, what you normally would have paid, though, in the second quarter, you know what I'm saying? Like, that $100, you still have to come up with another $100. So, you know, if you're not prepared or budgeted for that in your home, then you would have been waiting till that next quarter to pay that other $100. So now, people need to understand that they'll have two bills right on top of each other, a month apart, but two bills that are both due.
They'll have their monthly bills on the fourth.
And will, will your letter explain that, or, oh, okay. And then, just as a follow-up to the deputy mayor's question, so the costs of switching over to a monthly billing system have all been accounted for within the budget?
We have budget. It was a budget for the full year, which we anticipate for the entire year. This won't be complete until sometime in June, so it's really only half a year, so we've credited the budget on the full year spend. But again, we're going for a VP, we're implementing SAP, so we expect towards the end of the year, expect a portion of online billing as well, so. But we do, it will be covered in this year by 24 bucks.
By May?
Yep. Thank you.
The cost of mailing out monthly is four times what it was quarterly. So, I mean, I wasn't our teacher, but I wasn't completely ignorant. If you're handing out 12 bills instead of four, you're multiplying times four.
Right, but again, if you go on the online, if you're doing e-billing, we already have 16,000 people that were originally signed up, since we signed up on monthly billing, we already added another 2,000, so we anticipate getting anywhere from $30 to $40 people on e-billing, which will eliminate the bills and postage altogether.
We all know how extremely secure our internet service is.
Well, again, we already have a certain amount of people that are paying online, they're just not receiving their e-bill.
Mr. Hippolyte?
Not to belabor the point, but I also, in a sense, want to follow up on the administrative cost, because you've sort of implied a couple of things. One, you've implied that the switch is revenue neutral, okay? Because I'm gonna get my $400 bill, and it's gonna be broken up to $100 every, on a monthly basis. So from my perspective, I think you were asked with respect to the administrative cost, you've just indicated that it's been built in, but you haven't quantified it. And I guess, you, you also mentioned that the 4 percent rate increase, I just would like you to state for the record that, you know, what that reflects and what that doesn't reflect, and I guess what I'm, just want to make sure that it doesn't reflect any of your built-in administrative costs. And I guess, as a sort of a follow-up, you know, how does that rate for, in subsequent years, this 4 percent, absence of going, would we still have the 4 percent? Can we be assured that there are no administrative costs? I mean, you are getting some cash flow benefits from this, which possibly you can invest on a monthly basis and offset some of that, but.
So just in the revenue side? It does help in somewhat on the capital, but the vast majority of our revenue actually comes in during the summer and the fall, due to the rest of the usages. And we still, most of it, like I said earlier, most of our water rate rates occur between January and March. Two years, three of the dollars, we had that really bad winter. We had over 250 rates within that three-month period. So we spent in excess of $9,000. You can imagine, the water usage is not significant during the winter. This year is somewhat better because of the weather. So the revenues are always matched to expenditure that we incur on the water side. Historically, you know, I can't say that water rates aren't as much in the future, and they will, because of the rates and the capital investment and so on. Typically, we try to go in from 2% to 5%, try to keep the water rates in the middle. As far as administrative costs, I mean, like I said, right now, we do have people that do billing, we have people that do mailing, we have a sorted mail person. So all those costs are built into getting the bills out now. The goal is to outsource or quitting a part of the mailing service, eliminating mailroom vision. By going to monthly billing, we anticipate fewer calls, because the bills are gonna be smaller, we're not gonna get people calling us for the $900 bill anymore. So hopefully, you know, I anticipate there'll be a reduction in customer service as well as our billing department. So even though those costs are all built into the current budget, it is expected over time, as we roll this out, that we will be benefiting from a reduction in costs overall.
Okay, so if I may, just, just to clarify, I think what I heard you say is that, over a period of time in the short term, that you're actually gonna get a reduction in the administrative cost of the billing?
Well, not this year, because again, we're in the middle of a rolling heart. The system's posted live February of 15, 18, February 15th of 2018. Where we're gonna go out with a new customer portal, and really, again, push all the online billing and so on. So everything is budgeted this year. I don't anticipate that we'll see a reduction in administrative costs this year, but I do believe that it will occur in the future.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Schulman?
I apologize, but I think my mind is a little fogged from coming back from vacation. But if I hear correctly, number one, the rates aren't gonna go up.
This year.
This year.
The budget is gonna stay.
Number two, so you're asking for the same amount of money that you're asking for without changing the system. Number three, you may have built in the administrative costs, but you're now gonna send out tons of bills to a whole bunch of people who didn't get bills before. You're gonna maybe have some delay in people paying those bills. You're gonna pay part of your revenue that you receive to collection agencies, which you don't have to do now if you're billing the town. And so you're gonna get some kind of reduction in income on that. And if, as I read somewhere, you're, you anticipate that people will want to pay less money because, so they will be more efficient in the use of water, and reduce the work use of water, that, if that's true, that will mean people will use less water, which means you won't sell as much water, and you'll have less revenue. So if you're gonna potentially make things good with people because they're gonna use less water, you get less revenue. If you're gonna split some of your revenue with collection agencies and whatever costs you've got built into the system, and if you're not gonna get any more money because the rates are staying the same, at least this year, then how does the MDC benefit by switching from billing the town to billing the residents?
Okay, so, oh, again, the MDC bills the town for that board, which is steward, and revenue to reply. So right now, that, that goes through the app form process. This year, as I said, so let's make a change, the MDC will continue to bill the town for that board, which has no bearing on the water bill that we're changing here. which has no bearing on the water bill that we're changing here.
Well, I know that, but how does... How does the MDC benefit from switching from billing the town, where you get one shot and you get your money, to going through this process where you likely will lose some revenue and have some greater expense? I guess that's what confused you.
Again, if there's legislative changes or mandates that we do that, then those costs are beginning to be built into the budget. Right now, that's a 50% of the team, because under... There is no legislative change for us to build this, because we're customers, other than the town Ad-Board. That is not... That more is that 2017. I said, there's a legislative change.
But if you build it into your budget, that's going to require an additional budget increase next year.
It possibly will, because the flexion, that's your point, would might be a little tough now. We only use flexion agencies for multiple families. Anything else is done internally. So if there was any issue with a single-family home, that's addressed by its internal.
I have to... Okay. I'm sorry, I still don't quite understand, like I say, maybe I'm just...
Mr. Washington. The way you... Mr. Rivers, then Mr. Washington.
You don't anticipate difficulties with residential customers paying $14 a month versus paying quarterly? You believe that you will be able to collect at the same rate?
Yes. Yeah. Because we really have people that have wanted to go to a monthly bill. Because again, you know, we have some people that were getting $150, $200 bills. Now, if you get a monthly bill and it's $75, say, you're comparing that... Most people, his phone bills are larger, and most people's cable bills are larger than that. So right now, we have a very good collection rate of excess of 86%, 87% on all our water bills. So we believe this is going to enhance this, because it's going to allow people... And again, if you get a $75 bill, it's much more manageable than getting a $200 or a regular bill. So again, this is the feedback that we've received already from, you know, many of our customers.
Interesting.
Mr. Washington.
You mentioned the add the loan for the sewer system. Now, how does that reflect on us now? Does that sewer system... Is there any change there? Are we being charged for that, or is not going to be any charge for that?
This is just water.
Just the water? But it's not... It's not going to be any reflection on the sewer system?
Anything further?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Selden.
Madam Mayor, excuse my tardiness. I had a prior meeting. Today is one of those days where I guess I need a twin. But... And I hate to come in and ask questions at the tail end of a discussion when I didn't hear it at the very beginning. But I guess my question is that you're indicating that the amount of money that a customer is going to pay really is going to be the same, whether it's quarterly or monthly. And you're indicating that some individuals have mentioned to you that, I guess, by going monthly, it gives them an opportunity to better prepare a budget, because of doing it monthly basis. So that's the impression that I'm getting from you. Although you have some customers that don't like bills, and so now, as opposed to having a budget once every three months, they get a monthly bill. So I guess my question to you is, this particular change, is it... And I know that you're in business to make money and what have you, but is this change for the benefit of MDC or for the customer?
For both. Because again, in my example, you know, we had... In September, recently, we see this significant amount of complaints about people getting $800, $900 bills, and it just overwhelmed our customer service department. Now, if you're getting a bill that's $300, again, it reduces the number of people I have to have handling phones, because I don't have so many people calling and complaining about $800, $900 bills. So if you get a smaller bill, and you have more manageable for the homeowner... I personally don't like getting any bills every time I open a mailbox. I'm like, great, so leave me alone, I already get this bill. But if it's a smaller bill, I'd rather pay the smaller bill than waiting for it quarterly and getting a whopping $90 bill. I don't know how those people can afford to pay those kind of bills personally. So I'd rather get a smaller bill, because now I can manage it. If I say, geez, I'm using too much water this month. Or if you're doing my electricity, you know, kids leave the lights on, and I get a huge electricity bill. So you run down the house, tell the kids, come on, you gotta... I need to make it up next month, so cut all the lights out. You know, so it gives you a time to react to that bill, or the next period, so rather than waiting 90 days.
Now, one other last question. I know that, let's say, for instance, if you're paying insurance premiums or what have you, you get a discount if you're paying annually, or semi-annually, or quarterly, as opposed to paying on a monthly basis. So I don't quite understand how is it that you are can bill now on a monthly basis for the same amount as you're billing for the quarterly basis? I don't quite see how that's going to work, because of the administrative work that's going to take place, whether it's online or whatever. I just don't see how the rates can be the same if, in fact, you're having to do more administrative work.
Okay. So thanks for this, we said, as a building manager. So when we established the rates back in December, the revenues were made to match the expenditures for the year. So this was planned out, and I said, going forward, this is part of a bigger scope. Now, they're just doing monthly billing, but now they go to online billing. We try to reduce those expenditures, those posted paper, and to do more online banking. So that online bank is automatic feed from the bank. So everything that comes into our system is all automatically posted. I don't have to have people handling checks and everything else. So it's going to... Should stream on our process, because so many people already do this. The MDC is actually behind the curve on this one, because so many other people already do this. Eliminate manual checks, eliminate lines at the window, and so on. So I do expect that costs will go down over time.
So in that particular situation, then, you're suggesting that our customers are going to basically change their habits from wanting to get hard copies, or go directly to the window and do it online?
We already have requests out there for us to do this. And like I said, we have 16... Over 16,000 people that were originally signed up to get the pay online, they're also requesting to get online bills, which we have converted to... Since we converted South Windsor and Starford, another thousand people signed up for online payments. And we just sent out the Weathersfield bills this past week. So we expect that more people are going to be signing up for online abilities. Not everybody, because not everybody likes that feature, so we'll be doing both. But I expect that, like I said, anywhere from 30,000 to 40,000 people should be online paying their bills. So, and that will help us reduce our costs, as I mentioned a couple times. And that is the goal.
No further questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad.
Ms. Rogers.
The Citizen Day presentation, Ms. Paula Jones, sir. I've got some prepared comments to keep to the five-minute limit, but I can't help myself. I have to deviate for a moment, just to make a comment that wouldn't it be nice if the MDC changes its member towns and discussed a change in the system like this before they were ready to discuss it? Good evening, Mayor of the MLC Council members. I'd like to comment on two topics this evening. First, the Metropolitan District Commission, and second, the Farmington River Park. Regarding the MDC, Bloomfield Town Staff has attended MDC meetings with staff from other MDC member towns. Information is summarized in memorandum that Mr. Schenk attached to tonight's agenda. There are six different items referenced in that document, although I'm interested in all of them. I'm not going to talk about all of them, I just wanted to mention two right now. Item number two indicates that the MDC is asking for member town input on developing a separate lower industrial rate... Water rate for businesses. An industrial rate for businesses could be a positive development, provided that the differential between fat rate and residential rate is a reasonable difference, and provided that volume discount pricing, such as that that was developed in Niagara and later rescinded, is not part of the equation. A lower industrial water rate and no volume discounting could help our local businesses with their expenses, but still provoke a water conservation ethic. That would be a good thing. I'll add two more caveats. Water bottles that are repackaging our town's water shouldn't fall by the lower rates. And also, there should not be a separate lower industrial rate for the Clean Water Project charge. Everybody should take the under assumption. Item number six in the memorandum provides an update on the MDC's long-term control plan. The plan calls for building a north storage tunnel for the Clean Water Project to address sewage overflow and the Weathersfield code. MDC is now suggesting that MDC system is not causing the problem, but that failing septic systems in Bloomfield may be the cause. Really? Let's see the data. And if there is a problem in Bloomfield, why are we just hearing about it now? So my expectation, as a Bloomfield resident and as an MDC customer, is that any discussions between the MDC and their member towns should be fully transparent, and that residents of the member towns will have an opportunity to provide input well in advance of any action taken by the town and any action taken by the MDC. So I'm just skeptical of the MDC. So I'd like to, you know, know at some point, maybe not tonight, but how will the town ensure that bad type of communication happens? So that's that. Regarding Crex and the Farmington River Park, on March 4th, I saw this article in the Hartford Current. You know, Crex School Construction Project on Woodbridge Road in Bloomfield is being called off. And honestly, my initial reaction was great, followed by, oh, blank, you can fill in the blank. The great reaction was really kind of... Was precipitated by the fact that I really don't think Bloomfield needs another Crex school for lots of reasons, particularly one cited on Wood Farm. But there are tons of reasons that we were reading about it concurrently. But then my thoughts turn to the fact that the town has deferred maintenance on the house in Farmington River Park for years, and more recently, I think, has been relying on Crex's promise to put some money into that park and into the house. So, you know, my question is now what? And the answer better not be demolition by neglect or demolishing the house. So I've lived here for 24 years, and I've just seen, you know, too many things go on with deferred maintenance. So I've led and participated in the Blue Heights in the Farmington River Park for years. First-time visitors are blown away by, and most people don't even know about it, it could be such a wonderful resource for the community. So, you know, it's budget time. I know that times are really tough, but let's make sure at least there is some money there to get a tight move on it, so that we buy some time and we plan. You know, we need to own it. We can't rely on external entities to kind of apply to the rescue here. So those are my comments, and thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your information.
Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge. I passed out the comments, a lot of my comments, but hearing. I want to... I guess before I sort of echo the points Paul made, I also want to make a comment about the MDC presentation on the frequency billing. It was very... I mean, I agree with the comment about patient come to this with these changes before they happen, but I also was very, very disappointed that you couldn't get a straight answer to the question of, if you increase your billing from four times a year to 12, maybe a factor of three, what are the increased costs from doing that? Because there are higher administrative costs, et cetera. Now, they presented a couple of reasons those might ultimately be mitigated with more electronic billing, mail, the less complaints, et cetera. But they didn't show the numbers. And I think it's incumbent upon the council to get those numbers and to have a presentation that makes economic and numerical sense. So continuing with the MDC. The meeting agenda contains a memo summarizing a town... A number of town issues relating to the MDC, with the recommendation that these issues be referred to the council's finance subcommittee. I certainly agree with that recommendation, particularly with respect to issue of frequency billing, which I thought was going to be an issue that was raised tonight, not as a done deal. And the means of assessing sewer fees, the thing that Deputy Mayor Shulman was talking about, the Ad-Board, et cetera. That all needs to be discussed by the finance subcommittee and folks in the town, with lots of implications to that. However, several issues relate to the possible pollution. To possible pollution, we've heard about that. Long-term strategy in how the town will storm water, possible pricing structures that potentially impact water conservation, and long-term availability of safe drinking water. Those issues, accordingly, are issues that should be referred to the Conservation and the Environment Committee for its review and recommendation on this also. So I simply, you know, I respectfully ask that when you get to this item on the agenda, not only recommend that the finance subcommittee, but this go to Conservation and the Environment. Finally, as Paula pointed out, Hartford Current ordered on March 4th that the Crex Two Rivers School project, adjacent to Bloomfield Farmington River Park, be canceled. My understanding is that one of the ways that Crex has sold this project to Bloomfield in part on the promise to make improvements to the facilities at Farmington River Park, particularly restoration and conversion of the remaining building in the park to a nature center, community space, wanting to fire it sometime.
Okay.
We've heard rumors and reports from leisure services that Crex have backed up on this commitment and lost support. Now we know they have walked away. In any case, the question... That's history. The question now is how to proceed with these projects. I've heard the town's usual demolition by neglect mean that, oh, the building is foregone now to save. I doubt this is the case. The town needs to shoulder its responsibility to do some planning and budget for the building and improvements to the park. Town government has let Farmington River Park, in fact, in my opinion, all its parks, languish too long with insufficient funds and no plan to better integrate them to the community. Instead of responsible stewardship of these properties and public assets they entail, we've relied on outside entities, and once again, they have not delivered. So my request for the council is that we have to figure out how to do and decide what we want to do to use those assets in the park, and the days of waiting for Crex or someone else to come in and do it for us, we've got to do it ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grove.
I really just want to echo what Kevin has said about CEC being ready and willing to review the MDC matters, as well as the finance committee. And also to say that no one asked representative from the MDC if current customers have the option of continuing quarterly billing. Some people might not want to do this. So maybe when all of those questions are asked, some people like it just the way it
Thank you very much.
Val Rivers, 88 Kenmore Road. So I'm also coming with comments about what I consider to be a number of significant MDC issues that I hope we get to learn more about. I actually think the monthly billing may be a very good idea, because one of the issues with water conservation is giving consumers an earlier signal that they need to cut their water, which comes by bill going up because of more watering during drought season like we had last year. The thing that... The thing that I really plead with the town to take care of is when you're asked for a recommendation on an industrial rate structure for the MDC. And I'm a little concerned because I read Mr. Schenk's memo and noticed that there's a member town leadership meetings that are going to discuss these issues. I was trying to find out what happened at the last one on February 8th. It's not announced publicly on the MDC website, there are no minutes of it. So I don't know if these are open to the public or not. I certainly would hope for more transparency because this was such a major issue with Niagara. And there's a real, there's a real problem with selling water and wanting to sell more water, which is wrong, and the whole ethic of water conservation. It's a complicated issue. I've been going to state water planning meetings. One of the priority topics that is one of the few things everybody could agree on was that declining block rate structure should really be getting phased out. And that sounds like a fancy word, but it basically means you shouldn't be offering to lower somebody's water rate if they use more and more water. So it's a complicated issue. There are structures like the water utilities that are regulated by PUR, have a mechanism to account for when they don't, when they're conserving water, to make up for the lost revenue. And there are mechanisms that support industrial rate discounts, but they don't do it based on giving a discount for using more water. And I would really hope that when you're asked as a town, you make a suggestion to them that the easy way to do it is like, we need to sell more water, as can happen last year with Niagara, in order to keep your water bill low. That has a, you know, it has a very basic attraction to it. Everybody wants to pay more for their water, but long-term, as we saw, you know, our, our state is still, I looked to figure up today, 76% of it is still in a severe drought. It may be snowing, may have had some rain. We were 13 inches down last year and we haven't made any of it up. So that, that just concerns me that you guys and ladies get adequate information before making that decision. Like Paul mentioned, I would really hate to see discounts being given to major users that don't incentivize conservation. I personally don't think we should be giving discounts to water bottlers that are sending water out of state and out of our watershed. I don't think we should be discounting Clean Water Project charges. And that, that is a particular sore point because that came where we clean up the Connecticut River in Long Island Sound, and it gets hidden because MDC, you know, which has many good qualities, we'll say its water rate is, you know, the lowest in the area, but that's because they don't add in the charge for the Clean Water Project charge. So that's a very, that costs more than the water rate that people are getting to. So that tends to get left out of discussions sometimes. I hope also as a member of the CEC, I would love to spend some time and get some input. I think it's inappropriate for the committee to be doing it, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Father President? Thank you, Mayor Barbour, for the media, I'm William. I have prepared remarks as well as I have some handouts. If you'd like to hand out, if you would take one and pass along. I'm changing topics. Thank you for the opportunity to address your regarding the issue of BEATV's location in the future. As a member of the building committee and also as an individual member of the public, I do not have a problem considering buildings, making space available for BEATV and human services buildings. I read the letter from the bond council, dated 15th July, and I quote, quote, "We conclude that the town council or building committee, the town officers or officials authorized by the town council may determine that 40 of the 334th Avenue Human Services facility includes space to be used by non-town entities." That's already in there. Therefore, it seems to me that this wording says clearly that the building committee can do this on its own, but the day for the town council will modify the orders. Bond council further says in another section of the letter that, and again I quote, "We would suggest generally that the aggregate portion of the facility used by non-town entities on a basis other than as members of the general public, deliver the 5% of the facility's usable square footage. If I presume that 35%, approximately 54,490 square footage is common space, that leaves up to 1,700 square foot available for non-town use, this is more than enough space." It's also quite clear in the bond council's letter that funds from the bonds cannot be used to pay for the new BEATV. Again, I quote, "We would advise that appropriation should not be applied to cost of relocation for non-town entities to the new facility for improvement of specialized technological and physical accommodations for such entities." The only note is that according to my own council member, there will not be an easy task for us on the building committee to accomplish what is desired and needed for the new facility, including demolition of existing buildings for the amount authorized, namely $0.2 million, $300,000 of creation. If the argument is made that the town needs to help fund BEATVs moved, I'd ask you to review the following handouts that I have handed to you. These are available in public records. I have led and understand that BEATV has three sources of main income, funds from Comcast, Frontier Communications, town of Bloomfield, Truville, the council, and the Board of Education. I've not found any line item that needs the town budget, nor the Board of Education budget, for funds for BEATV. No items. My understanding, however, is that the board is providing roughly $10,000, the town is providing approximately $15,000, although I have not been able to confirm these amounts. Or if you look at line six on all three of the 990 EC returns that are passed out, you will see that BEATV has not done any fundraising in these three years. In addition, I personally don't recognize any fundraising being done by BEATV at all during this whole discussion. There are other issues on these return rates questions that leave out the council to rule their lead. Now I'd like to change subjects again, and we're only ahead of the system of the town of Bloomfield. I've been made aware through discussions regarding Board of Education's budget in 2017 to 2018. But I ask for an increase during due to the reasons following, the deal cuts in the ass during the budget process. Number one, Bloomfield's public schools test scores rank at least in the middle of the backstab white, if not higher. Number two, the goal being high in the top third of the state, it's easily within reach for appropriate funding, if we're not already there. Number three, for Dr. Trump's first four years here, the board asks for no, I repeat, no, of funding. The council listened to Dr. Trump's take on board, that his lowest increased test score statement within five years. He really did it before, which I didn't think was possible. We as a town need to provide them the needed funds as they have a huge unknown, actually they have two huge unknowns in the budget. They keep taking a bigger and bigger piece of the pie each year. One is a special education out of district placement. With the state providing lesser and less funds towards these costs, they need some flexible. The second is magnet school tuition. Again, the state reducing what they give, correct, from one of these magnet schools to town, i.e. the Board of Education, has to pick up more and more of the cost for students. These are two big unknowns that Board of Education cannot adequately plan. No matter what they plan, it's never going to be enough because they cannot budget for what the upside is, and there's too many board results, and they have no control. The board needs flexible. The board has run out of, quote, "Robin Peter to pay Paul" opportunities. They need to pay both Peter and Paul, and early luck will reduce the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Patriona Davis. Is that the Emily Cross, um, is there any other problems? Okay.
We come this evening to have a concern parents of students who attend Bloomfield Public Schools.
Excuse me? Name and address for each.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Taimina Fowles. My address is 1067 Bloomfield Avenue. Hello, everybody. My name is Patriona Davis. My address is 84 Inwood Avenue and I have a son who is a seventh grader, 12 years old, that I'm here to represent him tonight.
And Julie Crossdale Mills. I live at 18 Green Bay Drive for the last 15 years. I have a son at the high school, a niece, and a nephew at the high school as well as one of the nieces in Cam.
Well, as concerned parents, when our students started the beginning of the school year, we noticed that there had been a significant cut to the certified teachers that Cam's Middle School had. So as a parent, this became a concern because the number of students we had did not decrease. But it seems as though Cam's money continued to decrease on a continuous basis when we started to dig into the actual budget funds. This is some data from this year's proposed superintendent's budget. It lists the different test scores and the student composition at each school. I wanted to point out Metacomit, Carmonet Race, and some of the other schools. The reason why I wanted to point this out is you see at Metacomit, there are three different data points that is presented to you. When you look at the S-BAC data, there are four different categories that our students test into. You have your Level Ones, and those are the students that are not close to meeting grade level expectations. And if you take a close look at this data, which is provided in the proposed budget, that Level One student does not, does not appear in the data that is shown. When you take a closer look, you can see that a large portion of our students, more than half, are not meeting grade level expectations. But if you are a parent looking at the data as is presented here, it appears that our students are doing very well. Approaching is not grade level. So when you combine your approaching students and your Level Ones, those students who are not meeting grade level expectations, you have more than half that are not on grade Let's take a closer look at Cam's. For the, actually, this is Case, I'm sorry. For the fifth grade ELA, that's your English Language Arts students, when they tested the S-BAC test data, 45.4% were not meeting grade level expectations. Not so bad, right? But that's when it comes to English. 44.4% were not meeting grade level expectations in the sixth grade when it comes to ELA as well. When you look at math, 79% of our fifth graders did not meet grade level expectations. 61.9% of sixth graders did not meet grade level expectations when it comes to math. And this is the data that was presented to all people who read the proposed budget presented by the Board of Education, or the superintendent, I'm sorry. I'm getting a little worked up because these are our children. They are not numbers on a piece of paper. They are human beings. They are citizens in this town. When you walk into Carmonet Race Middle School in Case Intermediate School, you get a very well, warm welcome. These are some very positive students. They work very hard, and they should be provided with those tools that can help them meet their needs and compete in a world, you know, when they graduate high school and go off to college. When you look at the Carmonet Race Middle School data, 60.4% of students did not meet grade level expectations when it came to ELA. 62.1% did not meet grade level expectations in the eighth grade, as far as ELA is concerned. When it comes to math, 69.3% did not meet grade level expectations. 86.3% eighth graders did not meet the math grade level expectations. And this is the data that was provided, and it's public information if you go and dig for it, as we parents have. We'd also been looking at the budget trend. And while our population at Carmonet Race Middle School has continues to, continue to grow or sustain around 200, 205, 203, 210 sometimes, our budget has continuously been cut each and every year since, let's see, 2013, 2014, you start to see the cuts Also, I would like you all to know that our district is seeing a growth in our special education population, meaning more of our students have greater needs. How are we meeting their needs if we are not meeting the needs of the majority of our And this data is available on the state site. It's cited at the bottom. For Bloomfield High School, I was a little confused because I remember when I was in high school, we took a couple of tests. We took the CAP, we put, we took the PSAT, we took the SAT. But the only data that was presented is the SAT. And the data doesn't look that good to me as a parent. Global's testing data, I'll just leave that there for you to look at, you know, peruse in your spare time. And then we start eyeing at them, budget. So I'm now out of the way. But as you can see, our kids have some very serious needs around language arts and math that need to be addressed. So when you get that budget coming across your table next week, Thursday, right? Oh, this Thursday, correction, sorry. After the snowstorm, you know, nice and cozy after that long day off, take a close look. Ask some questions. What has been implemented for these children to, you know, fill the gap? Because it's a huge gap. How are we addressing those gaps? What is being done?
So Taimina was pretty calm. I'm a little upset because I heard that we are at the middle of the pack, third or probably third of the pack, increased test score, and we need to be more flexible with the Board of Education. For the last couple of years, I sat on a committee in the middle school, and that represented a committee tonight, just letting me be clear with that. And we asked for transparency and parental involvement. We created the budget for that particular school. We have sent emails after emails asking to be included in the, in the process, and we have not gotten any response in terms of when the meetings are, when we can be included. And hence, we went to the last board meeting and heard that the budget was already set after we sent a letter to the middle school principal asking to, again, to be inclusive November 28th. We met with the board, we spoke to them about inclusivity of parents into the system. They assure us that we can be a part of the system, but today, to date, we were never advised or invited to a meeting. So I just want to make that very clear, that for a town that I pay taxes, 100% of the time, all these 15 years, I've paid my taxes on time. My child was born and brought home to Bloomfield. My child was born and brought home to Bloomfield, not to Hartford, not to West Hartford, not to Simsbury, but to Bloomfield. I think that as officials who represent me, who am I voted for, I implore you to take a better look at what you rubber stamp sometime. Try to understand, try to ask the critical question, the hard questions, because at the end of the day, when you rubber stamp these things and you don't ask the pertinent questions, our economy in Bloomfield will fail. Those $2,000 apartments that are coming up behind us will not be rented for much long. Because when people figure out, pull back the skirt, and look under the dress, and figure out what we really have in our district for a school, they will run away from Bloomfield. So, my job today is just to go over some parts of the budget and to talk about the pieces that we noticed in the budget in terms of certified teachers, there will be a difference in terms of the budget for certified teachers. And although the board tried to say that it won't affect classroom staff, I can't see that possible. Because you can't tell me that you won't have not one teacher in our system that won't retire next year or resign from the system. Will those teachers be replaced? Will those teachers be replaced? Another point I would like to make is when we were going through this budget, it was as if we were doing a high-class CIA document review. This thing is so convoluted that the mere side, it is so difficult for us to go through it. If you want parents to understand what you're writing in this 180-page document, it needs to be more transparent. It needs to be more easy for our constituents to actually review and understand what you're proposing for our children, my child, my niece, my nephew. This was like a CIA, if WikiLeaks leaked it, we would have been lost going through it. It took three of us to go through this document. There is a code page that you have to fully understand before you can decipher what line item goes to what project, or if it's the central office, or if it's the district, or if it's for Cam, or if it's for the high school. When you look at West Hartford budget, it is so simplified, you can go right there and see two teachers, $5,000, superintendent's budget, $700,000, three people. It is, this is the worst document for a layperson to really go through and fully understand and grasp the concept of what the school board is proposing for their children. Now, if there were some parents that were involved and had a little bit of a say, I am sure that we would have told you guys that we don't understand this, make it more easy for us to understand. Because this thing has no relevance to me if I wasn't educated and knew how to read it. Tymina, who has worked in the banking system, has a financial background, and it took us three weeks to decipher this document. That is unacceptable. And as the council, if you sit there and just take the bottom-line number and rubber stamp it into the regular budget, you are doing a disservice not only to yourself, but to your community. When I look at the growth of the central office budget and the decrease in the regular school system budget, I am appalled that as a town, as rich as Bloomfield is, and touting all of these great things that we're doing for our kids, that we continue and we allow this to go on as long as it has gone on. I've gone through the budget, we have all gone through the budget. We have seen the expansion, the growth with central office. We have seen where central office have tucked away expenses that are earmarked for the central office into the district-wide budget. I have asked for an organizational chart. Any other district has an organizational chart to say who is at the helm of things and who is at the very bottom of it. We don't have such a chart in our district. West Hartford has one in their budget model that clearly tells you how many people are getting paid in this budget. We have no such organizational chart. That's a very simple tool to have in this process so that I know that my tax dollars are paying five people on the top, three in the middle, and one in the bottom. So, I won't continue. We have given you copies of this that are more simplified. I implore you to go home tomorrow in the snowstorm and take a good look at this document. A lot of you run on touting education, breaking down barriers for your community, ending disparities for your residents. I want you to truly start ending those disparities for your residents. I want you to truly start looking at the disparities that you have in the school system. Look at Wintonbury compared to Laurel. Look at the vast gaps. Two similar schools, but guess what? Two different populations. The kids who are most impacted are your brown and black kids, my future. If you were going to a doctor's office, would you want somebody who came out of this system, knowing that the educational system was not a top-class system? Would you want them to be your doctor? If you aligned the Bloomfield system in a dashboard, could you, as a parent, simply look at that dashboard and say, "Okay, I have a choice. I can make an informed decision that this is a better system for my child to be in"? We need to stop being procrastinators. We need to stop perpetrating that things are good when they are not. Yes, we have made some gains, and I will pat Dr. Thompson and his staff on their head and their backs for doing that. But we still have major critical issues that we really truly need to address, and that's it. This is a town, it's not just a retirement town, it's a town where we, 30-year-olds and 40-year-olds, expect to raise our kids and give them the best of everything. That's why we moved here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. That was an impressive presentation.
Alliance for Bloomfield Children, Lynn Weber and Vedanti Graham Days.
Hello, Vedanti Graham Days, 89 Wintonbury Avenue, Bloomfield, Connecticut. This is our co-chair, Lynn Weber. I am also a co-chair of Alliance for Bloomfield Children. We're here to provide the town with an update on ABC since ABC last presented to the town council. ABC has been around for over 17 years. In 2015, they had a retreat, and as a result of that retreat, ABC was restructured, and we spent a lot of time revamping our bylaws and kind of honing in on what some members of our community was interested in seeing ABC provide to the community. As a result of that, we submitted two grants to the Groundstein Memorial Fund, and from those grant applications, we are currently holding Cafe Conversations in town that deals with equity in education to kind of highlight what these mothers here said. And we're also going to have a two-day training in April that will deal with undoing institutional racism. So, they will be hard and complex conversations in which I think is needed within our community in order for us to truly support and champion for equality. And on that note, I'm going to pass it on to our co-chair, Lynn.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Weber, and I don't live in a lovely town, but I do have an office here. It's on One Regency Drive, and that's where the McV program, which is a home visiting program, lives, and so I work here. Part of the reason that we're here is that about a year ago, you guys were very, very good to us and gave us some funding so that we could continue to function. We have secured some funding, and Sheila will give you a budget, and we have secured some funding that will keep us sustained for the year so that we'll be able to follow through with the two grants and the Graustein grants. Those go away at the end of the year. Once we've done our function, those grants go away. But we have functioning money. But what we would like to be able to do is to continue to offer to the community some of the trainings that we have done in the past, which is PLTI, PEP, Parent Leadership Training. In fact, I do believe that you did PLTI.
I am.
And she now sits as a co-chair. So, she has learned that leadership role and is now working in it. So, a piece of why we're here is because you're in your budget season, and we would like to be at least on your radar so that you could see that we could, right now, what we can do is sustain ourselves and do the two grants. But other than that, none of the trainings that we have done in the past will be able to be done unless we are able to get some more money from different agencies, and the town is one of those. So, that is the piece of why we're here tonight, for you to put us on your radar, and we'll give you our budget so that you'll be able to see what it is that we could do with it and take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to wear a double hat really quick because I really came here to speak on behalf of ABC. But I've met these mothers and parents before at Board of Education meetings, and I think that them having done their due diligence in terms of analyzing that Board of Ed budget is something that I'd co-sign when I follow their lead in terms of imploring you all to do the same thing. And sometimes it takes having those complicated conversations to reach the common good of all. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we will be going, we will be going on to report from council subcommittees. Mr. Selden, Community Services.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd give a couple of brief highlights. We had our Community Services Subcommittee on March 1st at 6:00 PM. The meeting actually was called to order at 6:05. First of all, in regards to Social and Youth Services, during February 2017, the department received and processed six eviction notices. The department has seen an increase in residents needing affordable housing issues as well as loan modification hearings. The Bloomfield Fuel Bank received a check for $2,184.58 from the Home Energy Solutions Program. And also, the department has a new collaboration with Alliance for Bloomfield Children, ABC, for the diaper bank. With Senior Services, Ms. Pennell presented a senior center activity calendar of March and April monthly events. She also mentioned that the request for a reduction in the next year's budget in addiction, the capital budget request for a new money bus was withdrawn for approximately $115,000. Also, the senior center also hosted the Movable LGBT Senior Center, and a Black History Program was the focus for this month's meeting. Leisure Services reported that both youth and adult programs are well-attended. The youth center currently has 107 members. The planning for the Memorial Day Celebration and Summer Concert Series is underway. There are six out of 10 scheduled and confirmed concert dates so far, and the annual Memorial Day Road Race will carry over sponsorships from last year. With CEEC, the Home Energy Solutions Audits for 2016 have been completed, and as we indicated before, a check was issued in the amount of $2,184.58 to the Bloomfield Fuel Bank. The new vendor number for HES Audit, for the Home Energy Solutions Audit, is 1-877-306-4483. Once again, that's 1-877-306-4483. And CEEC is working with TPZ to discuss a checklist with potential developers regarding implementing energy efficiency standards in new construction projects. Also, at that meeting, there was a brief discussion in regards to the Community Awareness Task Force. There was a brief status that was given. They mentioned that the task force had an election of officers. Mr. Donald Chafin is the chair, and Suzette DeBoethren-Brown is the co-chair. They have established four working subgroups, Youth and Education, Economic Development and Housing, Seniors, Community Awareness. And lastly, in regards to the community, the Back to School Fun Fair, the event will be scheduled, is scheduled for Saturday, August 19th. And that was the report. They wanted to mention that the committee spent $14,000, not including in-kind services for the event. So, it is huge. It was the largest that they'd had before, and it was moved by Councilor Washington and seconded by myself to adjourn the meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Selden. Administration, Education, Councilor Rivers.
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the meeting. In fact, I was on my way to the meeting that night, and I had an accident. So, consequently, I was not able to make it to the meeting. In fact, the vehicle that was involved, with my car, both vehicles were totaled, and we spent probably an hour and a half at the scene trying to get everything squared away. Both vehicles had to be towed away, and so I did not make the meeting. But I would ask Mr. People, if he would bring us up to date on what was transpired at that meeting because I did not attend.
They say the show must go on, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Apparently, we didn't have a quorum for the meeting, but we did have some discussions. There were some pending items. We did have discussion regarding a noise ordinance, which I believe is time-sensitive. And I think there was a recommendation that the draft ordinance will be submitted to our town attorney for corrections, and then upon that, submitted to the full council for the possible adoption. I think there'll be a public hearing as well. For a meeting that we didn't have a quorum, we had quite a lengthy discussion on numerous topics. I'm just going to pick up on the backpacks. That has been a very successful program to provide backpacks to members of the students of the school system. I think this year, we're also going to be going out for some corporate sponsorships. We're hopeful. Niagara recently provided us with some corporate assistance, and we've got a couple of other, hopefully, deep pockets that we can at least tap and encourage to help support that very worthwhile program. We also touched a little bit upon the budget, and maybe I'll try to tie some of that in to my finance report. So, I'll move on to the, to some major capital improvements. We've got a lot of development. We talked about that at the last council meeting, that are ongoing, some private development. But the town itself is moving forward, as some of us know, with the Philly Park, with the Granby Streets, with the mountain road sidewalks, woodland, the freeway, Public Works, 330 Parks. So, we're fairly active with respect to the capital budget. I think we're hitting sort of a peak in terms of our capital spending on that, but that's going to impact the subsequent years in terms of the funding. The town manager also discussed his 16, 17 goals, and with respect to some other business, again, I'm going to try to tie in some of that discussion with respect to MDC. There's a lot of stuff. May I just kind of segue into sort of my financial report?
Very efficient.
Because we are going to have a discussion following Monday, Finance Committee. Because we are going to have a discussion following Monday, Finance Committee. And there's been some discussion, both from the public and from members of the council and administration, with respect to MDC, and specifically, more specifically, with respect to CEEC's involvement and input recommendations they would have in their purview. Primarily, when we were planning that meeting, it was to talk about the ad valarium tax, from going from billing the town for the sewers to beginning to build each individual residency for that. I suspect there should be some, possibly some conservation impact, and to the extent that CEEC can provide some direction to the committee, I would certainly welcome that. Some of the other issues, I think we talked about it tonight briefly. I provided my notes, but we talked about the discount rate going down to the, we talked about the industrial rate. We also talked about the tunnel that MDC is putting together. At the meeting, we talked about the catch basins and storm and...
MS4.
Thank you. The MS4 requirements that are going to be imposed upon either MDC or the member towns to begin to maintain the catch basins. And then also, there are a number of legislative bills that will impact both MDC in a variety of ways and also impact our town. I guess I'm also looking for some direction in terms of how we can efficiently schedule some meetings to solicit the input on CEEC, as well as to kind of move forward on some of these issues. And I suppose we've got a few days to talk about that, whether we want a joint meeting. And I'm not sure what the schedule of the CEEC. I will simply say that we would welcome your input, and if that could be somehow facilitated at joint meeting, or I'd be happy to attend some of your meetings. Okay, just let us know. But we need to certainly get the input of them, the recommendations, before I think we move forward as it relates to some of the environmental impacts. So with that said, I think I've ended my acting for all the administrative chair for that meeting, and that's the finance report. Thank you.
Well done. Mr. Rivers, is there anything on golf?
Hopefully, the golf course will be opening about mid-April, and a new chef has been hired. So we're looking forward to an exciting year at the golf course with new menus and et cetera. So right now, we're sort of on hold, so we're expecting exciting things. We have several things that are happening, I guess, this year. There was going to be a pre-pro tournament held at the golf course, so we'll be able to go and see some of the pros in action. So we're looking forward to an exciting year at the golf course.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Shulman.
There was no meeting of the Economic Development and Land Use Committee last month, as I understand, correct, Mr. Councilor Rivers?
That's correct.
Okay. There was supposed to be a meeting next Tuesday. Unfortunately, we want to be in budget, is going to conflict with budget, and therefore I've said that we're not going to have the meeting next Tuesday. We're going to look perhaps to have a special meeting scheduled later this month if we can, but this is the month of budget, and every Tuesday and Thursday night, we're going to be tied up with budget. So I don't know, perhaps look for Wednesday night, but we're going to have to determine that later.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Now onto council business, Old Business, 1516-64, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Board of Education Solar Farm Project.
I'm Bill Guzman, the Chief Operating Officer of the School District. Back in January this year, we had written a letter to the town manager requesting us to, the school district, to come before you to hopefully approve an agreement, two agreements for the solar projects. I don't know if you remember, but back in May of 2016, we initially came to the Town Council, asking them to approve a particular solar project. And at that time, there was a resolution passed by the Town Council that read, "To Approve the Bloomfield Board of Education Solar Panel Project Subject to Terms and Conditions During the Final Analysis." That "subject to" conditions was "during the final analysis" is something that's kept us from May 23rd to today's date busy in terms of getting all our resolutions and approvals in line. The Board of Education has approved the resolution that I believe is before you from their part. And we've now come to, we're here, Wayne Casper and I are here to ask for your approval of the agreements that are before you, the power purchase agreement, as well as the lease, the power purchase agreement and the lease between the Board of Education and the CEFIA, which is the Green Bank. I have been communicating frequently with Mr. Needleman, the town attorney, to ensure that the agreement was in line with his expectations. And I know, I think he reached out to the various members of the Town Council for input. I have here a copy of the addendum, if you would, to the agreements that I think, and I don't know how the process here gives to you, ma'am. There was some concern raised by Mr. Needleman, and perhaps emanating from the council, that required, and he felt most comfortable with this added letter, side letter, if you will. And as you can see, the superintendent and the board chair have signed off on this to address his concerns. As of Friday, or as of today, when he saw the signed letter, he was, Mr. Needleman was, in accord with this going forward and being presented to you. Just to, we, on this project, to give you some background, from May 23rd, we went out to bid back on request for proposals back on June 20th. There were six proposals submitted on July 26th, excuse me. As a result of those proposals, and at the time, we did two RFPs, one for the roof at A-Race and one for the field behind the Board of Education building. We interviewed the six companies that came in, and as a result of that, those interviews, we made a recommendation to the Board of Education, actually, the Finance Committee of the Board of Education, to go with two separate companies. One company, Kingspan, which is the company that will do the installation at the A-Race facility. And the other one was with C-Tech to do the project behind the Board of Education field. That approval by the Board of Education was subject to funding, continued funding at the state level through the Green Bank, because they had, and were hoping that through this legislative session, funds will be allocated to continue the Green Bank's involvement throughout the state. So the C-Tech project was subject to continued funding at the state level. So those were the two approvals that were done by the Board of Education, and those approvals were done back in October. The original agreement was for 20 years. We had the board attorney, who's been working with Mr. Needleman, by the way, review the agreements to ensure that they were acceptable to us, as well as to the Town Council. In his communication with the Green Bank, they were not sponsoring any more 20-year programs. So they were sponsoring 25-year programs. So we had to go back to the Board of Education, explain that to the board, and have them amend their original resolution to the 25-year period. That was done on February 21st. We are before you now because our board attorney, Tom Mooney, who you may know, stated that because ultimately, all property is owned by the town, number one, and two, because of the original resolution passed by the town, "Subject to Final Analysis," that was passed back in May 23rd of 2016, that we come back to you with the two agreements that you have before you and ask for your approval of those agreements and the resolution that I believe is before you. That resolution was drafted by the board attorney as well, and it's similar to the resolution that was passed by the Board of Education on this particular project.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Shulman.
One concern that I have is, I understand, if there's any roof repairs or replacement necessary, the removal of the solar panels, et cetera, and reinstallation after it's done is the Board of Education's responsibility.
Correct.
How old is the roof now?
That was...
The oldest portion of it is five years old, I'm sorry. Five years old, and then the rest of it is four years old.
What will the portion where the solar panels will go?
The solar panels will be over the vast majority of the roof.
What is the expected life of the roof?
The roof is warranted for 20 years, but typical life expectancy of a rubber roof is 30.
And it's how old now?
The oldest portion is five years. So we'd be right at the cusp on the 25 years.
So if we approve something for 25 years, the likelihood is, the odds are, that at some point, the Board of Education is going to have to pay to have it removed, have a new roof put on, and then reinstall.
Actually, it's going to be slim, because by having something over the roof, we'll actually be providing a certain layer of protection. One, you're not going to have foot traffic on it where the panels are, which is a major cause of damage to the roof.
Foot traffic?
You'd be, yes, foot traffic. People walking on the roof can damage the roof.
You got a lot of people up there doing that?
My maintenance guys are up there frequently servicing equipment.
I didn't think that was a hiking path.
No, but just the servicing of the equipment that's sitting on the roof causes a certain amount of foot traffic on the roof. So by covering, having something there, that's going to limit the areas that they'll be traveling on. Those areas will still be wide open, so we'll be able to treat or repair, maintain those without any concern.
The reason I ask is because obviously, I have no idea what that kind of thing costs to remove and reinstall. I got some ideas to what a roof costs, and ultimately, you know, when the Board of Education can assume responsibility for that, but ultimately, may come back to the town, because we provide the money to the Board of Education, unless there's a grant or something along those. You're confident that the load capacity of the roof is no problem?
The load capacity is not an issue at all. They have to do a structural analysis. They've already had structural engineers do a load analysis on the roof. They wouldn't be able to put it up there without having that structural analysis done.
Okay. And is that done or to be done?
They've actually already done it, in anticipation of the project.
Anything further, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like to make the motion.
All right. I'd actually been wanting to make some comments or...
Well, we can still make the motion and then go into discussion.
Oh, I thought we did already, okay.
No. Okay, motion?
I move that the Town Council approve the power purchase agreement on site lease between the Bloomfield Public Schools and Clean Energy Finance and Investment Authority, as reviewed and recommended for execution by Chipman and Goodman, the Board of Education attorneys, and authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement on its behalf.
Do we have a second?
I've taken the motion out.
Thank you very much. Discussion, Mr. Pedoy.
Well, I certainly do appreciate you giving us a little bit of a background on your, the process since last May, which I remember relatively well. It wasn't immediately clear that we're actually, because last year, I thought we were looking just at the fields, although I did hear through the grapevine, there was some discussion about carbon erase. So through your process, you've ultimately moved to do two projects, one the roof and one the fields. Good. We've got a, and we didn't get, I certainly didn't get a lot of opportunity to review the entire, however, I don't think it's my full purposes to, or responsibilities to review, particularly when we've got a number of very high-powered attorneys looking at this. So I don't wish to second-guess in any manner. So I won't, in terms of the agreement. However, it is a lengthy document, and I think I do have a responsibility to at least just request that you comment on the net savings, projected net savings, in any manner, on an annual basis, on an average annual, on a present-day value calculation, to get a sense and magnitude of what this is going to cost the town, save the town, excuse me.
In the first year, the projected savings to the town would be roughly, or an estimated When you project that out over the course of 25 years, counting for an average of a 3% increase in utility rate costs, either generation costs or delivery costs. And to give you an idea, our delivery costs, at least at the Board of Ed, district-wide, have gone up over 10% just in the past year. So using a very conservative 3% every year over the course of the 25 years, the total savings to the town would be $2,208,368.
Part of this, you mentioned earlier that some of this is contingent upon the state funding the Connecticut Energy Efficiency...
That's just the Board of Ed property project.
Okay.
Which we're not going forward with at this time. We have no agreements, no work's been done on it. This is... been done on it, this is solely the carbon erase project, which the funding is already in place for.
Okay. Again, not to second guess, but maybe just to educate myself, relative to, the agreement is between us, and let's call it Green Bank, as also the acronym, but they are going to, is there another agreement between them and the installers, and, I mean, for example, what if the installers go bankrupt, or they're sold and out, and how does that work?
Because our, well, because our agreement, the town's agreement, or the Board of Ed's agreement is with Connecticut Green Bank, once the system is installed, Kingspan kind of goes away. It's up to the Green Bank to decide who maintains, because they will own the system, not the Board of Ed, not the town, Connecticut Green Bank owns it. It's up to them to hire or have whatever company maintain it over the course of the 25 years.
Okay. So, my last question was, so, this is a, while $40,000 candidly is not a lot of money, it does fix the costs for the next 25 years, and that adds up to your $2 million. Could you state for the record that you're comfortable that this is a Wolf Law project?
At a $2 million savings to the town over the course of 25 years, guaranteed, because you've fixed your utility costs for a certain portion of your electric usage at that building, it's a no-win for the town, or I mean, it's a definite win for the town. I shouldn't say no. It's a no-lose situation.
We're not the only district that's doing this. I mean, there are many districts. Kingspan has made installations in other districts as well, other schools as well.
And I ask this on the benefit of my, you know, the next generation, because I don't think I'm going to be around by the time this contract...
I don't plan on being here either. But I think over the course of the 25 years, the savings, you can't beat it, because it's a very conservative $2 million estimate, because as I said, our utility costs, just distribution side, went up 10% last year.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Anything else? Misbelievers, then this, Lorenzo.
I can say that, as a owner of a solar system, it has its benefits, and as has been stated, that once the system is turned over, it's the responsibility of the company that's handling it to maintain it. In fact, I had a service company come out today to just go over my system, to make sure that everything is working as it should be. So, I have no more responsibility, the company that installed it doesn't have to do anything, so someone will maintain it, because they have sort of assured us, within reason, that you'll get a certain amount of return. So, it's their job to maintain it, and if you're not happy, they will certainly come out as often as necessary to oversee it.
They don't make their money unless they generate the power. Unless the system is operating at peak efficiency and generating the power, they're not going to make their money.
Right.
Mr. Lorenzo.
Actually, I think my questions were answered already, so, thank you.
Anything further? All right, this has been, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, I am abstaining.
Thank you very much.
1516-85C, discussion of possible action regarding the Alvin and Beatrice Wood Human I have been approached to include BATV in the Facility Building Committee, and it requires us to make a motion to either a yes or no, add BATV to the 330 Park Avenue project. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion is second. Discussion.
Madam Chair, I wanted to add to that motion.
Okay.
I think, I think we should be doing this on the favor of BATV, but we also have other needs, and I would like to broaden that a bit, to let the Building Committee look at some of the other needs that we have for extra space. I think going from a 90,000-plus square foot building down to a 50,000 one leaves us short of any extra space in town. And the town hall has relied on, the town hall has relied on the space in that building for lots of different things, it serves us very well. And I would like to see us work in some flexibility with space, and I think we also all realize that there's no way that that new building is going to cost us, well, we started at 30 million, went down to 20 million, and we're now at 23, I believe, and I suspect we're going to have some increased costs. So, I think it would behoove the Building Committee to look at this with a broad scope, and try to allow for more square footage than just what they might need for BATV, and without going into a laundry list of some of the uses. But I would like to see you add, consider the option of maintaining part of the present building, rather than just adding new square footage to the new building. Even if part of the old building is renovated to new, that would save us 30 or 40% per square foot. We have a usable building here now, whether we renovate it now or not, at least we should think about not knocking it down right away, and keeping a little bit of flexibility going. And for that purpose, I would like to open that, add to the change, that the Building Committee should also consider the option of maintaining part of the present building towards providing more space. And also, I think there's, well, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on that?
Comment, well, I guess...
I'm not quite sure whether that is...
We have a resolution to add BATV, and that's, do we choose to add to this as Mr. Merritt, or do we remain as is with what has been presented?
Well, certainly, well, I just don't know. You've raised some very good questions, but they don't come with any immediate answers. And I would simply say that it would be my recommendation to leave it as it is, it's clean, it's cut, because I don't know what the, you know, the bond resolution implications are with respect to your specific request. And I thought initially that the, my understanding is that they were going to tear down that building, so I'm not even sure how that would even impact the whole project, notwithstanding leaving space open. I think the project, I think the bond council's report did indicate that there was 5% that could be added to the space, and what numbers were used with respect to that 5%, be it the aggregate, or be it the aggregate less the common space, I think there's some sufficient space. I don't know, is that a front of amendments? Right motion?
Well, we do have a member of the Building Committee here, Mr. Berman, would you care to comment?
I'm not sure what the question is.
Mr. Merritt is suggesting that part of the existing building be maintained and used for others' uses.
As I remember the bond resolution itself, and as I remember what they told you, you council members, as well as us, the Building Committee, we do not have the authority to renovate or do anything to existing building except demolish it. Under the bond resolution that's council passed, and put on the ballot, and the voters approved, that's my recollection on that issue. If the council wishes to, outside of the bond resolution, the $22,300,000 that's authorized there, to add money separately from council funds, or from town funds, to renovate part of that building, that's a separate issue.
Yeah.
And that's not something this Building Committee, under the current bond resolution, has the authority to deal with. If you wanted to expand our charge, and we're willing to put money with that, I suspect that the legal counsel might say that's acceptable, but I don't know the answer to that, that's a legal question. Well, I do know definitely that we, under the existing bond resolution, we don't have the authority to do anything to the existing building except demolish it.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Mr. Rivers.
I think, in the original layout for that building, there's a space allocation for BATV, and I don't think it was ever satisfactory in terms of the number or the square footage that was being allowed for that, but I think that was in the original layout. And so, the discussion had been whether or not we have adequate space, that's one area. Now, to save space, to allow for storage, or whatever the case might be, I don't think that would be covered in the price of construction of that new building. We're going from 90-plus square feet to 52, I think it is. In that building, if you walk through it, there's so much wasted space in that, it was never designed for that in the first place. So, to look at the numbers in terms of what we're building versus what's there, you could walk around the building, you'll find that there's a lot of wasted space, and the idea now is to construct a building allocated for the departments that are there, and each of the supervisors have already expressed what they need, how much space they need, and that's basically what the bond has said. So, I think that's where we are right now, and I don't think that we could look at anything else in terms of saving money to do anything, because it's been allocated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivers. Mr. Merritt?
I have been through many Building Committee projects, and very few of them end up with one referendum, for one thing, and we all know that this is going to probably need more money anyway. So, somehow, whether we go back for another update referendum, or what, I am just saying, and the Building Committee is in no way restricted by the bond issue, it's only restricted by the charges. And so, whether it comes out of a change in the bond issue, the bonding referendum, or whether it comes out of town coffers, I just think we ought to try to end up with the best thing for the town at the best cost, and that should be the objective, not complying with the bonding. And I think we do have a need for more space, and we have a need for more money. So, that, the combination would lead me to believe that we should not, we should open up the doors to further discussion by the Building Committee, for them to lead us to what would be the best building for the town, or a combination of buildings. And that's why I said I wanted to at least open up that option for them to discuss, that's my only point, is we're not determining the end result, we're just opening up the possibility of discussing it.
Deputy Mayor Schulman.
I think we're talking about apples and oranges. First of all, what Mr. Berman was talking about, and Council Rivers was talking about, and perhaps what you're talking about, is to make sure the Building Committee can consider in its allocation of space, four walls, a ceiling, and a floor, of whatever square feet footage, period, and that being dedicated to BATV. There's a whole other issue out there, which you've alluded to, which is, who pays for the equipment, there's antennas and so forth and so on, on the roof, and the equipment, or additional equipment that BATV needs? That is a totally different issue, was covered by Bond Counsel in its, in Bond Counsel's memorandum. And as I understand it, that cannot be considered by the Building Committee in its actions. That is something that would have to be covered either through grants, or through our appropriations in the budget session. We commonly give something to the BATV, Board of Education does also, they perform certain services for the town, and we would have to have some discussion with the Board of Education and BATV with regard to an estimate as to what all that would cost, a removal and replacement of an antenna on roof, and so forth, so on, and equipment, and either a lot for this year, next year, or whatever, in our budget appropriations. With respect to the pure space, I understand you're concerned that we, there may not be enough space for some others, other groups who use the facility. And I believe that can be discussed with the Building Committee, but I don't know the Building Committee can make a recommendation with regard to usage of space for others, unless it's contained within their charge.
Mr. Selden.
Madam Mayor, my understanding is that as we, there was some discussion with various departments in regards to their needs, but I understand that, I don't believe that that happened with BATV. So, that's why we're at this position right now, where we are, was we're trying to discuss whether or not BATV should be added to that, to that project.
Yes, I just, I believe you're correct.
And so, the discussion in regards to whether we demolish, or add, you know, use the other portion of the existing building, I think is a separate issue. I'd like to deal with this BATV issue, to determine whether or not we're going to add space to it for BATV, or we're not, and then let's move on to the second issue, that's what I would like to see us deal with at this point.
Do we need to have more clarification from Mr. Berman? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have seen two, four, six different layouts so far, from our architects, as to what the configuration, or configurations the building might look like. In all six of those, there is space identified as BATV. All the planning on space needs so far has included BATV. We had discussion, we had a very brief discussion, a couple meeting, one meeting about BATV, which we said, okay, we need to really understand how much space they really need. I had, I went over, I talked with Howard, I looked at the space, I measured what he currently has, which is easy to do, because I have to count ceiling tiles, because they're all the same size in that building. We talked about what his needs were, we talked about what size he needs for different things. And I know at least one other member of the Building Committee has had the same conversation with him. Now, I do know that there was supposed to be a meeting with, I believe, the town manager and Mr. Friedman about some needs, and that is not in place yet. That's a separate issue, I believe, because the Building Committee, one of the members on the Building Committee happens to be on BATV's board. I can assure you, he's not going to let us forget about BATV, none of us are looking to forget about BATV. What we're looking at is what best works for BATV, knowing that no matter what happens, somebody's got to pay for the moving of the equipment, the satellite dish, and the transmission lines, and that we legally cannot, as a Building Committee, with the bond funds. Again, that is a separate issue, we understand that, but nothing, nobody on that Building Committee, I have heard, nor myself, not considering... But nothing, nobody on that Building Committee, I have heard, nor myself, consider, not considering BATV being in that building.
Mr. Hippelite?
I think most members, if not the public, may know that I also sit on the board with BATV. So I'm certainly encouraged that, I think there's a, an understanding consistent with the recommendation, was consistent with the renderings that you've received, that BATV is part of the overall construct from the architectural and the Building Committee's perspective. At the end of the day, though, we haven't formally charged them, and I think this is simply, this is just a pro forma, I think, to establish what I think everyone has basically agreed to. So I'm not sure if we need any further clarification, other than we just simply need to formally charge the building. For them to continue on that process of considering BATV would be possibly outside of the charge, and we just simply want to formally, as I understand it, just include them, include the station as part of the charge.
I absolutely no problem with that. I don't mean to hold that up, and I understand I'm not going to get anywhere with what I'm pursuing right at the moment, but I would ask people to at least consider that in the future. I would move the question.
Okay. The question has been moved. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
You know, I don't think I've actually voted. Have we recognized the public?
Point of order from the public?
Don't recuse yourself, that's fine.
I'll be happy to abstain from the vote.
There you go. Call the question.
He will abstain. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Passes? That's against. Okay.
Non-paying member.
Okay.
Let me go back there and continue the camera work.
1617-20, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Amendment, Amending the Conservation Energy Environment Committee Membership Requirement. Deputy Mayor Shulman?
I move that the Conservation Energy and Environment Committee...
Microphone.
I'll second that.
I didn't do it. Somebody wants to hear?
The solar.
Okay. I move that the restriction requiring membership on the Conservation Energy Environment Committee by the, and the others be removed.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Passed. New business. Consider and take action regarding tax refunds.
I'll move the tax refund.
Second. Discussion? Don't let everybody jump at it. Okay. Can we call the question?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Passed. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Metropolitan District Commission. Deputy Mayor Shulman?
I move that that be referred to the Finance Committee. Oh, yeah. For consideration as next meeting and report back to council. And I would note that does not have to be specifically referred by council to the CEC. What I suggest is that you call a special meeting of the CEC to, at the same time as the Finance Committee meeting, and automatically you'll be there. This is a technical requirement for referring it to Finance Committee as a committee of council. But certainly, as Councilor Hippelite said, you can have a joint meeting, you can come, just come. Anything that you really want to do, be welcome.
Fine. This is referred now to Mr. Hippelite's subcommittee.
Oh, yeah, I just, okay, it's on a Tuesday at this time, so I think, no, it's not going to be on a Monday, because this is going to be a long meeting.
Monday.
Yeah, it's going to be a long meeting. And normally there's, he's not here. We just need to coordinate, because we're not going to be able to fit, I don't think we're going to be able to do justice in half an hour, 45 minutes to an hour. So we just need to, it's going to, some of these issues is going to take multiple meetings. But I think we can begin the discussion at the next Monday's meeting, and we'll just continue it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hippelite. Report to the Town Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have several items. I think for everybody out there, we have a major weather event starting later this evening, actually tomorrow morning. And we urge all of you, if you wish to be safe, to take some, a look at the various storm precautions that are on the town's website. The Town Hall will be closed tomorrow, Tuesday, the 14th, and it's possible, depending upon the length of the storm and the severity of the storm, and also the length of the cleanup, that we might possibly have a delayed opening on Wednesday morning. We'll have to wait and see how the storm develops. I'd like to remind everybody, the, really, the opening of the budget season starts this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the Town Council chambers. There'll be a presentation by both the Board of Education and myself concerning the budget overview. And then there will be subsequent meetings, at least on the town budget, on subsequent Tuesdays and Thursdays. We hope to have the budget pretty well wrapped up by the end of the month. And then the annual town meeting will be held on May 1st. Again, the detailed schedule for the forthcoming special meetings of the Town Council to review the budget is located on the town's website. I will indicate at this point in time that a significant amount of stress on the town budget is due to deliberations that are going on at the state legislature with the governor's budget. And we hope to get some further clarification as we move ahead with the town's budget process. The last thing I'd like to do is just remind everybody that the Wittenberry Land Trust is having a progressive dinner fundraiser that will be held on April 29th. I think if people are interested in participating in that. I was participating last year, and it's a great event. It's a good organization to support in the community. And I would encourage you to go to their website to get more details. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schenk. And I will be succinct. If we had more parents who did as much homework as the parents did tonight, we would have an incredibly good town. If it came to accreditation for parents, they got it from me tonight. I'm very, very pleased with them. And please, everyone, back when rocks were soft and I was teaching in East Hartford, I tried driving from East Hartford to Bloomfield during the blizzard of, hmm, heaven help me. Was it 78?
78.
78. And I was driving a Ford Maverick, and to drive eight miles, it took me four and a half hours. If you don't need to be on the road, don't. Your human life is much more important than any errand you think the life could not possibly exist without you doing it. More important for your lives. Now, maybe we have the approval of the minutes. Motion, please?
No minutes.
And second?
No minutes.
Discussion?
No minutes. There are no minutes.
There are no minutes, okay. That's an easy one not to pass. Okay. Council comments? Mr. Lorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I have no comments tonight, but I do want to thank our parents for being here tonight and giving us a very informative discussion around some of the things happening at our schools. So again, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your taking the time. Thank you.
I'd like to. It reminded me so much of, maybe 15 or 20 years ago, I think I go back as far as anybody does, where we had mothers come before the council on behalf of the board budget. And I haven't seen it in a long time, and it is refreshing. Thank you very much. I also wanted to remind everybody that we have a very, very tough budget year coming up ahead. And so it's going to be, an awful lot, we have, you know what's going on in Hartford and what's going on in the state, and those are going to have a profound effect on what we're doing. I think, what's Hartford just came up with a huge increase that they're looking at, and I, we can't, we can't deal with that. And we've been sitting pretty here for a while, and so it's going to be a very difficult year for us. And we have to be, look for ways that we can save. And I was bringing up there, when we're doing these things and spending 20 or 30 million dollars on a new building, we need to look for economies, because we can't do that and support the board budget, and it becomes a guns and boat, and we have to prioritize. And we have to look for ways of doing that. So you can't have everything. So we have to decide what's really important. I think education is one of those things. And we have to be, look at other ways of not spending money, so in order to do that. And I think that's something we're going to be, have to look at in this coming, this coming few weeks as we go through the budget.
Mr. Hippelite?
I think we both, we've all acknowledged the community involvement that we've seen tonight, and, well, that clock may say nine o'clock, actually. It hasn't sprung forward yet, so it's 10 o'clock.
There it is.
Certainly.